Okay councillors, good standing. Welcome councillors, members of the executive and many of the public joining us here in the gallery and those of course joining us via the wire, Brett or in the Action Group line. So I would also say that council acknowledges the elders both past and present and the tribes whose traditional lands form the municipality in which we met today. Councillor Young, great question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We beseech you Lord that we may have granted Western understanding and sincere new purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill. Amen.
Please proceed. Apologies and ladies and gentlemen, we have a legislative question councillor Bowden and councillor Newton is also at our place today. Are there any further apologies?
Follow me, please, I'm going to accept it.
Thank you, Executive Councillor King, always in favour, Harry. President's Office, Mr President, Mr Seyer.
Oh, President, Mr Acting Mayor.
Thank you. One more minute, can I have someone move that the minutes of the scheduled meeting of council held on the sixth of August 2022 be a true and correct record? Yes, move councillor Kay, second to councillor King, always in favour, Harry. Decisions of conflict of interest, decisions of conflict of interest in there. Here are now, John Davis and Redding's petitions, do we have any, Mr Seyer?
No.
Yes, please. Public question time and we will also, the in-house question time, a minute silence on the passing of the phone, a little bit of a second. Can I have a move as we spend time here councillor King, second to councillor Jeffrey, always in favour, thank you. If you would stand, move and we will produce a quick silence in the passing of the break. Thank you councillors and members of the gallery.
Yes, one question, Mr Acting Mayor. We have a question from Cheryl Rogers. Cheryl's question is, please can council advise on the Nia and Nia West master plan now that Mark Bowden has left? I'd like to thank Ms Rogers for her inquiry in reference to the new community representative. Each town with an active progress group or association is assigned a member, Mr Acting Mayor, of staff and for the No Action Group it's Jan McKeown. As for the Development Officer, Mark Bowden, we will be, we're going through recruitment phase right now to replace that role. As for operational actions, we're happy to send some information back to Ms Rogers to let her know the actions and where we're up to. I'd just like to mention that another way to ask questions of us is to contact us through our website because we can respond more quickly than at the meetings but I thank Ms Rogers for the question.
Thank you. Are there any further questions, Mr Seyer?
That's it.
That's it, thank you. Can we move to the resumed standing orders please? Councillor King, second to councillor Young, always in favour, Harry. Open forum, are there any members who should speak at open forum? This is open forum, are there any members of the public who should speak at open forum? Is anyone? And complete section A. Section B reports, item B twenty-two point six-six, Victoria to New South Wales interconnective west, otherwise known as VNI West program. Mr Redding, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A really exciting time in terms of improving the infrastructure for power distribution around Australia. And AEMO, for those who don't know who that is, the Australian Energy Market Operator, has put forward a program of where that will occur. And they proposed, there's two options, the VNI West which is a high capacity overhead transmission line to connect the Western Renewables link which is north of Ballarat with project energy connect via new stations at Bendigo and near Coram and connect into New South Wales that way. The other option was a virtual transmission line involving use of battery technology at South Morong in Victoria and Sydney West in New South Wales. The work done by AEMO says that it actually makes economic sense to go ahead with the VNI West which is the one that comes close to us through Coram or near Coram. And the recommendation in this report is to note a letter that we have already sent to AEMO supporting that, supporting that option. But as part of our letter we also raised a number of other issues around route options for what comes into that VNI West line. But we want how we want councils to be engaged as part of the process for the exact location. And how we can benefit share by having, how can we locally benefit from having a major piece of infrastructure coming close to our municipality? And encourage, and how can that help us encourage more renewable energy generation within our municipality and region? So in closing, the letter to AEMO says that council strongly supports upgrading the interconnected capacity between Victoria and New South Wales as part of an overall upgrading of the transmission network and agrees with the proposed preferred option of VNI West. What we also added was that we consider VNI West to be a minimum augmentation option where additional capacity is required to accommodate and maximise the potential of the Swan Hill region and the wider Murray River renewable energy zone. And I, I move, no I don't move, I recommend that, I want to become a councillor. That the attached letter be noted as what was submitted.
Thank you, Mr Redding. Any questions, councillors? Any questions? I'll move it, sure, councillor King?
Yeah, I happen to move as per the recommendation.
Second, yeah, so Jeffrey?
Sorry?
You said motion?
Yeah, just briefly, projects such as this are significant and important to the future of energy distribution in this, in this nation regardless of what means that energy is generated by. And whilst I'm supporting the construction of new energy distribution facilities, power lines etcetera, particularly those that can increase the reliable supply of energy into our region. As noted in previous discussions at the assembly, I remain sceptical of the positivity with which the Central Victorian Greenhouse Alliance embraces renewable energy means particularly solar and wind. I do not support the loss of productive farm there for the construction of broad acre solar farms. I do not support ongoing taxpayer government subsidies which prop up the renewable energy system. Without government subsidies, the renewable energy, renewable energy industry would actually not exist because it's just not profitable. I do not support the solar industry in its current form where over eighty-five percent of the solar panels used are imported from China. They have a limited lifespan of around twenty years and used panels are disposed of in landfill. I could go on. I believe it is important as part of our advocacy through the Central Victorian Greenhouse Alliance that we encourage the research and development of all forms of energy production including clean coal and nuclear energy so that we can provide the cheapest and most reliable energy to all consumers. Our hope for the increased transmission capability as outlined in this report and letter can lead to further manufacturing and processing industry development in our municipality and other regional locations.
Thank you councillor King, anyone else wish to speak to the motion?
Well, yes, I certainly support the decision that council have supported in terms of the VNI West upgrade. It is an upgrade, important upgrade for the energy network of Australia. In given terms that it's a double, so it means you can go from Victoria into Victoria where the cart network is basically run by traffic. And in allowing this development to build, increase the opportunity for the renewable energy that we do have in North West of Victoria to make it to that and provide some benefit to energy industry side, yeah, support the outcome, thank you.
Further speakers for the motion?
I'm also supporting of the motion which you know is a letter that we've already written in support of the improved transmission network. I do see great potential for generation of solar energy in our region. We have such incredible heat at certain summers that I think we've got, we've got to maximise given that is the current policy settings. And also I'm in favour of reducing greenhouse gases in, for the environment. Additionally, there are a lot of homes and a lot of businesses that are taking advantage of solar generation to reduce their power costs that are already seeing the benefit on their bottom line. And so therefore I support this.
Thank you. Councillor Cowan, any further speakers for the motion?
Yes, I just wanted to say I support the motion but I think it's important because of the different points that are being raised that we do monitor this as it goes along to mature, it's best suited to our region.
Thank you, councillor Young. Always in favour?
Councillor Thursday.
Yeah. I think we'll go out for a break, always in favour? Item B twenty-two point six-seven, Swan Hill and Rambour Lunar Lights Journey event twenty twenty-three, Mr Redding, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The state government has recently announced some regional event funding for events ready to progress in twenty twenty-three. This report outlines the three funding streams. And the funding stream two which is up to half a million dollars to support deliver medium large scale events is what we're proposing with submitted application for, for what we're calling a lunar lights journey. People will have seen similar sorts of events at Moamah, Bendigo, Allring. So this is a similar but unique to our, unique to our municipality content. Proposed to have an operational in Swan Hill for I think it's nine days and then four days in Robbenbar. That might be ten days and four days in Robbenbar to allow the broader community to attend and also to attract tourists. What we're hoping for is increasing economic benefits by driving visitation from outside the region. Showcasing Victoria's key regional tourism attributes and developing a sustainable calendar of regional events. Based on predicted visitation, we hope that that will fund an event on a yearly basis moving forward which has been the case in Moamah, they've just had their second year's event. So the recommendation is that we seek funding through the Regional Event Fund twenty twenty-two for the Swan Hill and Rambour Lunar Lights journey. To, and hopefully will be successful to be able to run an event next year. At a, at a normally relatively quiet time of the year for tourists, I think.
Thank you, Mr Redding. Questions, councillors? Yes, councillor Jeffrey?
Yes, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Do we know how many applications are normally submitted and how they are successful?
Um, no. Where it will be a very tightly contested fund, is why we're very advised.
Thank you. Good questions, yes, councillors?
Yeah, I think I have answered this question, it's about for the, for the public. The intent of the funding is to create something new and then hopefully be able to sustain that model into the future as a sort of supporting event, is that, that's pretty much what I look for?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further questions? If there are any further questions, can I have a move please?
Oh, move, that's rather recommendation.
Second to councillor King, he just speaks to the motion, councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, yeah. It's certainly an exciting opportunity for council to apply for some funding to get a new event into both in our municipality, so Swan Hill and Rambour Bar will hopefully be a little bit successful, I'm sure it will be tall and contested. And it's really important to note and good to say that it's at a time when you're there but I have any other major requirements in my town so bringing a, bringing a further into collaboration using our few individuals and more to the town. So hopefully it's successful and we fully support it, thank you.
Councillor King?
Uh, yeah, just add to that, fully support any funding that brings new money into the region and allows us to, to have events such as this with, with minimal cost to council. I think it's great that it, it will enhance or it goes hand in hand with other modern things like the laser light show at the, at Parkway to the Murray at the Pining Settlement for example. So it can only add to that experience and, and like councillor Jeffrey said, hopefully in the future that once we have this one-off event that it creates enough interest that we can sustain it into the future.
Thank you, councillor King. Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor?
I'd like to speak to the motion. Just after coming out of Covid, I think any events that we have that make our community positive and happy should be supported, so fully supportive of the application.
Thank you councillor, any further speakers for the motion? Any against the motion? Please to play the vote, councillor.
Bye.
And two votes, always in favour, asking about my sweetie. Item B twenty-two point six-eight, Australia Day twenty twenty-three, Mr Redding, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's with some sadness that I announced that the Australia Day Committee, a volunteer committee that has operated for forty years has decided to step away from managing the Australia Day event in Swan Hill. Of course councillors are aware in other towns across the municipality, local community groups run small scale events but the Swan Hill one has always been fairly large. The committee, some members of the committee have been part of that committee for forty years but certainly a continuity of various community groups have run that event successfully for that period of time. But they, they had, they had advised council that prior to the fortieth anniversary that they would be looking to step away from running the event given the age of some of the members and the need to hand their reins over to another organisation. So we have worked with the committee to look for options for changing the event to make it less onerous on volunteers. And to, to no great conclusion however. What we have done is suggested that council will potentially run the event but, but call for an expression of interest from community organisations to see if anyone wants to be part of that. There is some funding in the budget for the event but it has become costly to run. I would like to say that the volunteers have done an excellent job for those forty years and we suggest that they be commended by council in the formal way through a mayoral, mayoral reception. So the recommendation in this report is that we note that the Australia Day Committee is unable to continue to be involved in the planning for the twenty twenty-three event and future Australia Day events. We write to each of the committee to acknowledge their years of dedicated service to the community. But we host a mayoral reception for the members of the former Australia Day Committee. We conduct an expression of interest process to identify organisations willing to partner with council in staging the twenty twenty-three event. And conduct a review of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three event after its staging to determine the format of event and consider any issues related to the staging of future Australia Day events.
Thank you, Mr Redding. Any questions, councillors? Yes?
Mr Redding. Is this a case, this is not a case of the Australia Day event disappearing but evolving and changing in all likelihood, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you, just checking, that's my understanding of it, that we will all work together as a community, there'll be a review and look at possible future possibilities and it's not a withdrawal of support for the, the community gathering?
And certainly we think there's still energy in the community to have some sort of event but it might need to change and make it, as I said, less volunteer intensive so that it can still run and operate and people enjoy it and fulfil what it's meant to fulfil.
Beautiful, thank you.
Any further questions, councillors? Any further, please, yes?
I'll move the motion as recommended.
Yes, councillor Jeffrey, you speak the motion?
Yes, please. I firstly like to acknowledge the Swan Hill Australia Day Committee for their many, many years of service to Swan Hill and for running an incredible event that has historically, you know, notable and a great occasion for the community to come together. It's a great time to reflect on our nation and it's also a wonderful time to acknowledge the service of, of, you know, wide variety of community members who have done community service over the years. This is not council withdrawing support for the Australia Day event, it is simply that events don't always stay exactly the same forever. And this, I'm sure that the Australia Day event will evolve and will be maintained in the town. The small communities all run, generally speaking, all run Australia Day gatherings and they're very successful and well appreciated by the community and they also acknowledge the service of community members. So I think that this motion to recognise the Australia Day Committee for all the work they've done to recognise that formally and hold a mayoral reception is very appropriate. Then we will be looking for other organisations to partner with us in the staging of the twenty twenty-three Australia Day event. Twenty Three Australia Day event and conduct a review to, that seems to be the appropriate way to go forward, given that our council does have a policy of community consultation. And that is what I'd like to say about, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor King. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge and thank all of the community service groups and individuals that have put in over the forty years of the Australia Day event. Some of that happened over the whole forty years, some of others that have retired or been involved for a couple of years, but they have found it hard to find new people to come aboard and run the committee and put the day, days events in line. Perhaps that they've decided that they can no longer continue, which is sad, but forty years is a fantastic effort. And I know a number of those organisations and groups like the Right Tree Club, the Lions Club, the S S and the Fire Brigade are still keen to participate in a future format, so support of recommendations, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers for the motion? Against the motion? The visitors, you've provided a vote, Councillor King?
No, I've said it all.
Thank you very much. We're very well, all those opposed. Ask your members, please. I can be twenty-two point six nine, Pioneer Settlement and Art Gallery Development Regional Growth Fund. Mr Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As councillors are aware, we applied for this Regional Growth Fund grant back in two thousand and eighteen, so sometime about some, before councillor McCadie, councillor King were councillors, I think. For a variety of projects across seven councils across two states, a mighty effort in getting a total of, well, over sixteen million dollars in grant matched by sixteen million dollars, sixteen point something million dollars on councils across that region to go towards twenty-nine projects across those seven councils, largely tourism related projects to improve opportunities for visitors to that greater region of New South, southern New South Wales and Northern Victoria. Of those twenty-nine projects, all nearly our, are complete or nearly complete. And the major one for us is the one with the biggest, biggest fund requirement is, was the building of our place at the Pioneer Settlement to house a new regional art gallery, the entry to the Pioneer Settlement, a new visitor services area and an Aboriginal tourism and cultural space as well, and allow our Aboriginal community to make use of Pental Island for cultural purposes and for tourism purposes. Things have changed and the Pioneer Settlement has been heritage listed, which means the proposed development that we have, the plans drawn up and ready to go to tender cannot proceed or is unlikely to be approved by Heritage Victoria. However, we have been working with Heritage Victoria about a possibility of a one-storey building on the site to house three of those uses, being the visitor services, the Aboriginal cultural and tourism space and the entry to the Pioneer Settlement and of course to Heartbeat of the Murray and the new show that will commence later this year. And we've had some relatively positive reception to that idea from Heritage Victoria. Obviously plans still need to be drawn up and a permit applied for, but certainly the answer was not no, it was we're happy to work with you to get a design that would meet the requirements of Heritage Victoria. In addition, it's not just been the heritage listing of the Pioneer Settlement that has delayed any progress, it's also been the ability of council to extend the grant deadline. Grant deadline is the thirtieth of June next year and had the prop, had Pioneer Settlement not been heritage listed, the building would probably be nearing completion or would have been completed by June next year had we commenced work when we were ready to go. And, and the mayor and CEO did meet with the minister last week and, and I looked to the mayor and the CEO, correct me if I'm wrong, really didn't get a straight answer on the extension to the grant or probably got an answer that it wouldn't be extended, but there are potentially other opportunities for funding. I'm not seeing any shakes of hands. So we have been in contact with the funding agencies, the bureaucrats in the funding agency, we have said we can progress with doing detailed planning for an option of two buildings, that is extending the art gallery where it is and building a new single-story Heritage Victoria approved building on the Pioneer Settlement, so that we are ready when funds become available. We have two shovel-ready projects of some significance that we could apply for either with the state government or certainly with the federal government when funding becomes available. So the recommendation in this report is to proceed to, to prepare those plans for both buildings, so a single-story building at Pioneer Settlement and extension to the art gallery in place where it is, so that we have two shovel-ready projects. And that can carry out community engagement at various stages in the development of these plans. And I will note that there are some minor components of the project that we will complete and that includes the Monash Drive car park and project, which we split into two, two stages and stage one is complete. Stage two was the area that would have been impacted by building vehicles to construct the Our Place building, so we wanted to do that after that was complete, but we will do that now so that it's complete. And hopefully we've also got enough dollars to do some, some works of the, what we call the spoons car park as well to improve that. So that will, that will happen early next year and we will also finish the gardens projects, a part of which is the Yamagata Galsen Rocks, which is already complete, but some other landscaping works that we're working with the state government to changing the location from the Pioneer Settlement to another location. So three recommendations before you councillors, that includes the concept planning and detailed design for the existing art gallery, concept planning and detailed design for the new single-story Heritage Victoria approved building at the Pioneer Settlement and that we carry out appropriate community engagement, some of which is highlighted throughout the report.
Thank you, Mr Green. Questions, Councillors?
Miss Green, I think you did cover this, but just to emphasise it, the new concept planning for the detailed design for the new building with the entrance and Heartbeat of the Murray visitor services and Aboriginal tourism space, that would be in keeping with the environment of the Pioneer Settlement and its heritage and museum type.
Um, look, absolutely, and what we've put in the report on page thirty is a, really is just a sketch and it was a massing diagram prepared by heritage architects to show that a suitable sort of building, single-story, but made to look like smaller buildings would be appropriate and certainly a suggestion that Heritage Victoria said would be very appropriate. Of course, they want to see detailed plans, they want to know about materials, all of those things, but certainly that, that sort of proposed design option was something that was positively received.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Excuse me, Mr Mayor, it's very hard to hear in your gallery, if you could do something about that, very hard to hear.
And councillors, including myself, will attempt to speak up a bit, but any further questions, councillor, any questions, please? Any none, can I have a move, please?
Yeah, having to move the Martian aspect of the recommendation.
I did, councillor, you know, seconded councillor, yeah.
I'll second motion.
I'd like to add an amendment, is that possible?
You said amendment, yes, what is the amendment?
Just to recommendation one, where it says commence and complete the concept planning and detailed design for a new larger art gallery by extending and modifying the existing gallery, I'd just like to add following councillor consultation and approval.
You approve that amendment, councillor King?
I would have thought it's covered in, in three, but have our, we had, rather than that amendment, we, in three, we could carry out council and community engagement at various stages and that, and that.
That's fine with me.
That ticks a box.
Yeah.
So number three, carry, carry out council, councilball, councilment and community engagement and that covers all aspects of the projects.
That's fine, yeah, it's okay with that.
Yep, okay.
Second one?
You've moved that and we have a seconded, the amendment has been accepted by yourself, so you can be, control of the vote, councillor King, if I go. The Martian, councillor King?
Thank you. Thank you to Ms Green and her department, other council officers for preparing the, the report for what has been a fairly drawn out process. It is unfortunate that we even need to be considering this report. This funding from the Regional Growth Fund was obtained for the purposes of constructing our place, a ten million dollar iconic project to construct the fine facility of a new entry to the Pioneer Settlement, a new art gallery, a new visitor information centre and a new Aboriginal cultural and tourism centre, all co-located in a single iconic building for the Swan Hill community and those who visit. By now, our place should have been completed and occupied. A ten million dollar project for the Swan Hill community, which would have ensured the success of the business model of the Pioneer Settlement and reduced the rate pay subsidies to operate it. It would have ensured that the Pioneer Settlement remained at the forefront of historical tourism experiences in Victoria and Australia and, and continued to build on increased visitation numbers since the exception of the Heartbeat of the Murray Laser Light Show. It would have kept us relevant to experiences offered by our tourism competitors such as Sovereign Hill, Puffing Billy and Flagstaff Museum in Warrnambool. It was an iconic project supported by the majority of the Swan Hill community and most importantly, by the friends of the Pioneer Settlement group, many of whom are represented here today, a group of tireless volunteers who donate their own time and raise revenue to support the activities of the Pioneer Settlement. But life of male pioneer and history is brought to life at the Pioneer Settlement, history now also tells us the story that a selfish, obstructionist minority group of people who lack the expertise, foresight and vision of tourism products into the future, who do not volunteer their time to the Pioneer Settlement, would railroad this project and deny the Swan Hill community a ten million dollar facility to showcase the history of our region. So here we are now, with ten million dollars to spend and no project to spend it on. I support utilising these funds to prepare ourselves for shovel-ready future projects on the miracle chance that funding for this project execution is extended or that future funding becomes available. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor King. Councillor Green?
Um, I'd like to support a lot of the comments that councillor King has just made and I believe that we do need to move ahead with the items as before, as per the recommendations, but I also feel the need to say, the Art Gallery Committee has been advocating for changes to their gallery since two thousand and four. The committee and council staff have spent many hours on planning, discussing and consultation on this issue, only to have their ideas and concepts stuck to what I believe is a minority of community members and how disappointing that is. My belief that this is a community minority is also supported by the fact that a flyer was distributed into Swan Hill letterboxes by the Swan Hill Rate Pays Association urging rate pays to contact myself and then councillor Benham objecting to statements we'd made in council supporting the Our Place initiative. Neither myself or councillor Benham has had any contact from anyone objecting to our statements, but what we did have was numerous contacts from within the community supporting our place and commenting on the need for positive activities to support growth and development of our city and our region. I thank the Art Gallery Committee and the Pioneer Settlement staff for their efforts. It is no mean feat to work with seven other councillors and to receive a grant of this size and magnitude and then to see it maybe disappear. In closing, I wish to say that a comment, common comment over many years made by community members has been, why hasn't Swan Hill grown and developed like it took from Morduro? Now I think what has happened with this whole situation is a classic example of why.
Thank you, Councillor King. I just want to speak this for the motion.
Oh, no, I'm speaking for the motion.
Thank you, Councillor King.
I'm saddened to hear that we're going on with this negativity because things have evolved as they have evolved for a reason. They don't happen without a basis in people's feelings and their assessments and their appreciation, but I, of, of the proposal that's been put forward, the consult, consultation with the community for the Our Place plan was not done prior to the plan being made and therein lies the seeds of what happened afterwards. I would not like to speak of people in our community as, you know, in a denigrating way, either FOPs or other, other people. There we have so many hardworking people sitting in our gallery who have contributed to our community over many, many years and I would like to recognise all of their work. Neither is any objection to this, the proposal that did happen purely because it has been put out there by my fellow councillors, who I also respect and care for. However, it was not a retrospective position to be against the Our Place development. A lot of tourism assessments of our region have said that we need to develop new projects outside of the Pioneer Settlement in order to keep our visitors here for more than one day. This has been an issue that has come up again and again and I'll only put that out. I am someone who is very much in favour of a vibrant and flourishing arts scene in our town and I am concerned that the location of the gallery, even as it is beside the Pioneer Settlement, is not supporting it to the degree that it would were it in a prominent place and the opportunity to have a more thoroughly realised Aboriginal cultural centre with an art gallery, it's, I feel also a sense of sadness that we have missed out on that opportunity. I was also very concerned all along the time that the project was constrained by space inside the Pioneer Settlement and that would have restricted its growth over the time. So to have such a large development in a space constraint, in an area constrained so much by space was always, you know, potentially got a, you know, limited ability to grow. When we, when we're an area in a town that has so much space and so many different locations, some of them very majestic on the Murray River, I did struggle with seeing the common sense of this project. However, we do have to move forward and out of the recognition of the heritage listing, our town has been recognised for the, the initiative of our forefathers and foremothers who worked so hard to put the Pioneer Settlement down and influence the course of our state's history and that is a fact. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor King.
I want to speak, I want a lot of the recommendations here, Mr Mayor, we are, we are where we are and the options before us are to use the funding to come up with some concept plans for the art gallery and a very generic idea of what might get Heritage Victoria would consider to utilise as the Australian Visitor Information Centre for the Pioneer Settlement closer to Monash Drive. So there are a couple of constraints, we don't know about the extension of funding. We know Heritage Victoria are positive and in principle are something similar to that design, but there's a lot of unknown that go towards it. So I'm keen to progress with the recommendations. There's a good community consultation on what, without our land, the land to visitor information centre, et cetera, who compose and would like, and I also apply through Heritage Victoria, so happy to progress with the recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey. If you may, I would speak as far as the debate, councillor King, do you have to close?
Yeah, just briefly thank the councillors for their input and yes, to use councillor Jeffrey's words, we are where we are, so let's use the funding that we do have to get as far advanced as we possibly can be, get projects ready, get completed what we can get completed. And as I said in, in the debate, if we do get an extension of time, well then at least we're ready to, to have a go and, and build something because we don't get opportunities for these sizes of projects in this region very often, so support, we need to go ahead.
Thank you, councillor King. Anything further to do, we'll go to the debate. Close the paper, ask your members, please. I can be twenty-two point seven zero, Community Advisory Committee. Mr Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Resident Rate Pays Association met with council earlier this year to outline a proposal to set up a community to outline a proposal to set up a community advisory committee to advise on, uh, the operations and the future development at the Pioneer Settlement. Um, I think it's probably fair to say that, um, the, the deputation from the Rate Pays Association expressed, expressed a desire for, um, maintaining the heritage values of the settlement um, and the traditional, um, traditional activities and things that operated at the settlement in the sixties, seventies and eighties, um, rather than for new development. Um, they proposed a membership of, um, the various heritage organisations within the town, um, including the Genealogical and Historical Society, the Steam Oil and Machinery Club, Speedway Heritage and Restoration Group and the Swan Hill Vintage Car Club and of course someone from the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement. Um, this report goes through a variety of options that council can consider in terms of setting up advisory or management committees, uh, for council facilities. And I, and I don't propose to go through each of those, um, as I'm su- I'm sure councillors are aware and have read that through this report. Um, what I do propose to say is that, um, it's been unclear from the rate payers', um, documentation they have submitted to council what issues they would like to be, uh, providing council advice on. Um, and certainly in terms of reference, should a committee go ahead, would need to be drawn up to be quite clear about what that advisory role would involve. Um, but the various models that other organisations have vary significantly too. Um, from Flagstaff Hill in Warrnambool, which is similar to how we run here with a volunteer association on site. Sovereign Hill has, um, a skills-based board of directors and Porta Ratuca has just moved to a, um, a beneficial enterprise model with a skill base and paid board of directors, where council actually provides them with the funds to operate the council responsibilities at the Porta Ratuca. Um, I guess, um, of concern is that, um, council really already has an advisory committee. It's not called an advisory committee, it's called the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement, a group that's been in existence for a very long time, who have fifty active members who turn up weekly or fortnightly, um, to volunteer and help run the Pioneer Settlement and do so very, um, confidently and passionately. And the report indicates the number of hours that they put in, um, and over two hundred hours a week, um, that those volunteers provide the Pioneer Settlement. And certainly the, um, the ability for the Pioneer Settlement to operate is, is totally reliant on , um, the volunteers. Without the volunteers, council could not afford to have paid staff doing the work that those volunteers do. Um, that group, um, through all new development at the Pioneer Settlement provides advice, is engaged with and contributes to, um, uh, the proposal, propose new developments. They provide their own, um, ideas and suggestions for how things can be improved and are constantly, for example, improving farm machinery and getting things operational so that they can be driven around the site, as just one example. And, and I look around and see Laura Smith, who's given many, many years of her life running the Paragon Cafe, which, um, was run with great success for a very long time, again contributing to the success of the Pioneer Settlement. That group is skilled, passionate and has a great understanding about the operational and, uh, op- operational operations, um, about the operations of the Pioneer Settlement and can contribute to its future as well. Um, the recommendation of, of officers in relation to the establishment of, um, a community advisory committee, um, we did propose, um, five different options for council to consider. And we really are recommending option two, which is, we engage with the broader community, um, including those people that, uh, those community groups that, um, propose to make up the committee, um, in a, in a structured way, once or twice a year, to get some ideas from the broader community about the future of the settlement. And we continue with the current, um, model of the, um, Friends of the Pioneer Settlement providing that more continual advice and suggestions on a regular basis. Um, we thank the Resident and Rate Pays Association for its suggestion to establish a community advisory committee. There's no doubt there is passion and desire to, for the, to see the Pioneer Settlement continue to, uh, prosper. But we encourage those members of the Rate Pays Association and any other interested group in the vision to join the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement Association. That group can, can certainly welcome new members, particularly those that are prepared to provide some time to volunteer across the, um, across the settlement. So they are the three recommendations, um, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Ms Green. Any questions, councillors? There are, I thought you should come on and ask a minute, please. Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to move slightly different to the recommendation. I'd like to move that we implement options one and three, um, in the report, which is essentially operation and consultation for the Pioneer Settlement remain as is. Um, and then leave items two and three off the recommendation, uh, as they, as they stand.
We've moved options one and three. Do you have a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Councillor Young, do you wish to speak to the motion? Councilor King?
Uh, yeah. Again, thank you for the thought, thank you for the, uh, Resident Rate Pays Association for, for their, um, their interest in the, in the Pioneer Settlement. Um, however, as per, as per my motion, the Pioneer Settlement does not need an additional advisory committee for its operation. In fact, it would be unprecedented that we would endorse such a proposal. Current management structure of council employees working in consultation with Friends of the Pioneer Settlement volunteers when left to its own devices works completely following estimates. It would be unprecedented and unworkable to essentially have two separate groups having input to the operation of the Pioneer Settlement and for council to report to. Further than my previous comments, regarding the funding for Our Place, I would suggest this advisory committee is driven by the same minority which has already denied our town of a ten million dollar infrastructure project, the economic multiplier of which would have been in excess of twenty million dollars during construction. I ask the question, to what lengths do I want to go to to change the way the Pioneer Settlement is right now? Since the Pioneer Settlement is all about history, maybe we should reflect on the history, which is saying why council is in fact the manager of the Pioneer Settlement at the moment, which happened thirty years ago in nineteen ninety-two when the former committee of management asked the council to take over management of the Pioneer Settlement. In short, the Pioneer Settlement was doomed. It had bank debts of over three hundred thousand dollars, trade creditor debts, mostly with local businesses, of over a hundred thousand dollars and employee provisions of over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Over half a million dollars of liabilities, a financial basket case. And whilst financially the Pioneer Settlement is not quite where we'd like it to be now, its economic benefit to the region is well documented. As in the report, the, the contribution of the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement is also well documented and a lot of the projects that have been executed at the Pioneer Settlement would not have been done without Friends of the Pioneer Settlement. The addition of modern facilities such as the bar and toilets at the Lower Murray Inn and cutting-edge technology in the heartbeat of the Murray Laser Light Show have seen visitor numbers increase and these two business units be cash flow positive. Modern experiences which enhance the traditional features of the Pioneer Settlement and modernisation which has been endorsed by the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement. My say voluntary organisation with over fifty active volunteers, as Ms Green said, an average age of over seventy, my apologies, that's what I've been told, who understand that to stay relevant in the tourism market, that the tourism product must evolve to keep up with competition. I say to the people who want the community advisory committee and the, the, uh, resident, the Rate Pays Association, if you want to be involved constructively in the operation of the Pioneer Settlement, then there is already an avenue for that. It's called the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement. It's a structured organisation, it has regular meetings and it has a positive working relationship with settlement management and with the council. We don't need another committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor King.
Can I?
Yes, yes. Um, I just want to say the Pioneer Settlement is an iconic part of Swan Hill history and that we need to support an appropriate, um, continuation of this so that it does continue into the future with a, a long time to be witnessed. Um, no one can dispute the role of Friends of the Pioneer Settlement and volunteers. There's no indication that worthwhile interaction has been undertaken by the Rate Pays Association and the volunteers and friends who have expressed their disappointment at this not happening. Um, so I just want to reiterate that they are an important and invaluable component of the settlement. Past history shows that the operation of the Pioneer Settlement, as councillor King said, was handed over to the council at the documented request of the then committee of management owing to the large financial debt and the falling visitor numbers. Maybe this is a good reason that a similar thing doesn't happen. I believe that options one and three are the best options for future operations as it will allow input to many parties whilst still allowing existing model of management to receive community input without devaluing the contribution of all those involved in the operation of the settlement.
Can I put in an amendment at this time?
You can. Arise, an amendment.
I would like to suggest that we incorporate, suggest option two, continue with the existing mode of management, however introduced, sorry, biannual or annual workshops and engagement opportunities, et cetera. Um, do I get a second for that?
You have a second. Sorry. So I haven't written the answer, so what are your proposals?
So, option one, two and three. So implement option one, two and three. So that was it on page forty, um, councillor Jeffrey. It says, number two, that we would have twice a year a community consultation process, that is, um, workshops and, workshop and engagement to engage with the broader community, let them know plans for the Pioneer Settlement and also take, um, feedback and ideas. So it was part of the original recommendation from the officers. It was the one that councillor King left out. Or the part.
Right. That's all I've done. Oh, sorry.
The demand, the, uh, motion is that options one and three be included. And the amendment is that we add option one, uh, two to the one and three, so.
Which is option two on page forty. Which was part of the original. Recommendation.
I'll have a second.
Right, councillor Jeffrey, second for the motions. Do you wish to speak to the, um?
Um, yes, yes, I would like to speak to the amendment. Thank you. Um, it's part of the Local Government Act that councils do thorough community consultation about issues that relate to, um, the ongoing, uh, functioning of the community or issues that are of concern to large numbers of the community. And therefore I think it would be reassuring to the community if we had an ongoing manageable process for the community to be involved or aware of ongoing plans, but also to put forward their ideas. I think it would be, um, inclusive and in line with the Local Government Act and therefore I recommend it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Young. Do you wish to speak to the motion?
Uh, I've spoken to the amendment. Uh, I think it is a worthwhile option to keep included in the terms of, uh, we obviously have a strong interest of members of the community who are necessarily are involved in the operations, that might attend to have family history that is operated at the Pioneer Settlement, that would quite have been included. So I think the amendment is worth including as part of the overall recommendation.
Yeah, we'll now vote on whether the amendment.
I'd like to speak against the amendment.
That was, you said?
Yeah. Um, thank you. I believe option two is required. Um, if we look at option one, it says broader community engagement will incur on, will occur on project basis. That satisfies our obligations under, for community consultation under the Local Government Act because we're talking about projects, um, essentially changes. So normal community consultation will occur through that process. Um, and ongoing feedback and consultation, um, as is part of the, the request for the community advisory committee, is available through the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement Association as they meet regularly with, um, the settlement management. And so ongoing consultation is an avenue that's available to, uh, to members of the, of the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement Association. So there's no need to incur an additional layer of consultation every six or twelve months, um, just to satisfy a minority of people. The avenues are already there, used whilst they're, we don't need to create anything new. So I'm against including option two, um, and hence against the amendment.
And for the speakers against the amendment?
I'll speak against the amendment. I agree with, um, councillor King. I think that, um, the process is a new place to have adequate representation as per option one and three.
Thank you. Do you wish to close the rate on the amendment? Let's go down. Okay, councillor Young.
Um, yes, I, I would like to, um, acknowledge the hard work of past, um, volunteers who helped create the Pioneer Settlement and in a gentle way object to the way, um, the assessment provided by some of our councillors. Some of these volunteers were involved in the building of the art gallery, the building of spoons, the transport of the lodges to the Pioneer Settlement. All, uh, things which were very positive developments and to make assessments, negative assessments, um, thirty, thirty plus years on is, um, just, I don't think it's a great look. Um, and I think that, uh, it would be great to just have this formal process for consultation. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now go to, I would give a little speaker's发言. Those for the amendment? Those against the amendment? Amendment is lost. Original motion now becomes the motion. Okay. And we have had two speakers for the motion. Any for the speakers against the motion? Original motion?
Oh. I'll speak for the motion. So the original recommendation as per the screen put forward by councillor King. Um, firstly, uh, in considering the proposals put forward by the Rate Pays Association and considering the information provided around all of the Pioneer Settlement, uh, and acknowledging the Friends of the Pioneer Settlement and their structure and how they report back through the management of the Pioneer Settlement, as I have been doing for far fifty-seven years now. Um, I've come to a greater understanding that what we already have, what has been requested in place in terms of that we have the Friends of Pioneer Settlement. So I understand and appreciate the Rate Pays Association coming from a side of the community that would like to have more input into the operation and would encourage them to utilise the structure that we already have in terms of the Friends, Friends of the Pioneer Settlement. So, um, happy with the recommendation put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any further speakers, uh, the speakers against the motion? There's been none. Would you like to cross the debate, councillor?
I think enough's been said. Um, Miss Acton there, thank you.
Thank you very much. The debate, almost in progress. Against? Motion is carried. Item B twenty-two point seven one, something is on the line, that's due, as in currently screening Swan Hill. Ms Green, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We now move on to a really easy planning application. Um, I know councillors are, um, have been briefed on this, so I'm just going to do this, um, briefly. It's an application for a, for a, I might just wait. It's an application for a, for a, I might just wait. Shall I continue, Mr Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
The application is for a two lot subdivision of some, uh, land zone rural living in Coreny Street. Adjacent to our industrial one zone land also in Coreny Street. Um, in terms of the planning scheme, a, a two hectare lot can be considered, that's not a problem. And in fact, the applicant has indicated that it's for the purpose of a dwelling, again, the dwelling doesn't actually require planning approval, it's a subdivision that does. However, in this case, the major concern is its proximity to an industrial one zone. Um, and as councillors are aware, we are, um, running short of industrial zoned land. And Coreny Street is the large, is the largest, um, location where industrial zoned land is located. The report goes through the planning scheme and also indicates that by placing a house where is proposed on the smaller lot to be created would really almost sterilise some of the industrial land from industrial development. Or if not sterilise, it certainly significantly, um, reduce the, um, types of industry that could be located because of the buffer distance required. Um, and that is shown on pages forty-eight and forty-nine. Um, which shows a two hundred metre buffer for a fairly innocuous industrial use that would be required to be, uh, maintained. So, that area, um, along the, um, the yellow strip there, the, the main drain, it's not the main drain. Is it London Eye drain? One of the drains?
No, it's not, it's not.
The London Eye channel, that's what I'm trying to say. Um, it really means that that land probably can't be developed except for the most minor of industrial uses. Um, the applicant was, it was suggested to the applicant, could the house be moved to, or could the block, the two hectare block be moved to the other side of the, um, existing dwelling to allow the industrial land to develop to its greatest extent, but that was rejected by, uh, the applicant. So, I know councillors will have read, uh, read this report, um, from cover to cover. Um, but that really is the, the largest issue, is that ability to get the most out of our very limited industrial land and by placing a dwelling in close proximity means we're limiting the use of industrial land. Um, where there are other options for a dwelling on this property. Um, should the land have been zoned rural living, you know hindsight's a wonderful thing, probably not. It's probably been zoned rural living for twenty years or more. Um, should always be some sort of transition from an industrial three zone before a residential zone. Um, but that's where we're at. Um, so the recommendation is that we refuse the application. Um, issue a notice of refusal of grant of priority for a two lot subdivision. A dwelling excision in the farming zone, well it's not the farming zone, excuse that mistake, in the rural living zone. At two hundred and eighty Coreny Street, Swan Hill, on the following grounds. And that's largely about its inconsistency with state and local planning policies.
I'd like to move the motion.
I'm just gonna ask a question.
Oh, questions?
You have a question?
Ask a question, sorry. No.
Um, first one was I wanted to clarify whether it's rural living zone or farming zone because, thank you. Um, and my other question was in relation to, you talk about buffer zones and the need to buffer industrial use from residential, potentially residential use. Um, my understanding is that between the industrial area located on Westbrook Drive, which comes off Williams Road on the back of Coreny Street. And the low density residential area, not, not the rural living zone, the low density residential zone of Nottingham Road, I think it is, down there. There's currently a seventy metre buffer that, um, inhibits basically residential, the edge of a residential building and the edge of an industrial building, they must be seventy metres apart. Is that, that's, that's correct?
I don't know about the seventy metres, I know there's a buffer there that was instituted when it was subdivided.
Yeah. Um, that's what, my understanding is seventy metres, I was just saying clarification on that. Yeah.
Um, and the planning scheme of course changes in the EPA, in fact, you know in the report, we still are yet to hear back from the EPA in terms of the response. Um, but they're well out of time to provide us with the information.
Yeah.
Um, but the, uh, the attachment to the report uses and activities with potential adverse impacts. That has been upgraded relatively recently in terms of distances and the distances increased. Councillors will recall, um, the impact we thought, um, the transfer station was going to have on the South West Development Precinct because of the institution of a one kilometre buffer. Um, anyway, we, we resolved that issue, but the one kilometre would have been part of the South West Development Precinct couldn't develop for residential purposes. So, that, the buffer distances change.
Any questions councillors? If there are none, we're going to move the motion.
Number two, that council grants per, the use and development of a dwelling in the farming zone at two eighty Coreny Street, Swan Hill. Subject conditions in accordance with the proposed plan.
I'd second the very motion.
Can I move the amendment? Or you have to have a second to first?
No, you can move the amendment within your time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd just like, I'd, happy with that, I'd just like to amend it slightly and suggest, um, that the applicant work with council offices to realign the north-south boundary, um, and remove the dog leg that's in that boundary. Do you, do you be happy with that councillor?
Can I see? What you mean exactly?
Is it going to be around the, uh?
Dog leg around the shed, I just think, that, that was one of the objections that council officers had, that we discussed at an assembly.
Is the sub?
Um, and, uh, so I'm just suggesting that
Sorry.
Just suggesting that that would then negate that, uh, that objection.
Is the subdivision big enough without that dog leg being there?
Uh, it can be slightly, it can be slightly realigned and just take that out.
Depends on?
My understanding is it can be done.
Is that suitable?
It's a minor consideration, but yeah.
Just go into the line up.
Okay.
Yeah, straighten that line up, there's, there's small dog, if you fit the one that goes around the shed.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd be happy to accept it.
Yep.
This is a question, it's, this condition because of, those points, um. Do you have a second?
Yep.
Do you have a second? Do you have a second to? That motion, that, that motion from councillor King? Would you speak to the motion councillor?
Um, yes, I'm happy and comfortable that, that there are no, um, contradictions to this planning uh, application going ahead, given that the applicants are willing to take on that responsibility and understand the situation with the industrial land being along the line. Thank you.
Okay, I'll ask a question. Yes, before the, the, uh, the, the, that dog leg, that dog leg can't be for planning or title or whatever, what happens.
Well, as a condition?
Subject to this recommendation, it's that's your decision, so it would be a condition. We'll transfer that into a condition on the permit. So, that we have to second amendment to the permit or appeal to VCA.
But, that's any question.
Would you speak to the motion councillor?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, Swan Hill is in need of rural lifestyle, rural lifestyle properties. And the current zoning of RLZ in this area allows for this. Uh, whilst it's not included in this report, the applicant has provided a long-term concept plan for further subdivision, um, of this, of this title, uh, that was presented to us at a, at a recent assembly and for the development of the remainder of the property. We do not currently have a long-term strategic plan to rezone this area as industrial or any other area for that matter, as industrial. And this is something that is absolutely urgently required by this council. And we need to address that urgently because until we actually have that strategic plan, we can't go on recommendations like this that, oh, we could do this and we could do that because we don't have a strategic plan. From my review of the plans, there's an approximate buffer of about seventy metres between the proposed house and future development of that industrial land. And this is consistent, as I mentioned in the question, with the buffer that's currently required between industrial properties in Westbrook Drive and low density residential properties, which I note are of a higher, um, of, of a lesser size than this property in Nottingham Road. So, I support this planning application, um, and support future development of this area for rural lifestyle properties on the edge of town. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Do you further speak to the call then?
Um, the external authorities have approved this subject condition, so I think we should be going along with that. Um, the land already has the right zoning classification to be approved. Um, the council has expressed many times a need for more lifestyle blocks in our council area. And as councillor King said, this is a great opportunity to start doing that. Um, I've spoken personally to some of the residents in the end of Coreny Street and they have no interest in reclassifying, classifying that area as industrial and they support the application as submitted. Parties are fully aware that the closeness and proximity of the industrial zone, um, is right there and they are prepared to build and have a residential building on that site. And going off from what councillor King said, we really do need to be looking as a council at other options to create more industrial land within the Swan Hill Rural City Council ban, boundaries as a matter of urgency.
Do you, councillor? Do you further speak to the call the motion? Against the motion?
Oh, speak again, speak, not an, uh, not an exit decision on my behalf, I can say how the, the votes are gonna lie, so I'll just have my full thing. Not, not an exit decision, but the buffer signs for industrial zone and in person, this is the wrong reason. Um, and I'm just very concerned around that buffer distance of the residential area into, uh, matching up to industrial zone and what that future industrial zone, what could happen there in terms of what, what is it regarding, what practices are being undertaken? And the impact on the, the, it's just the residents that propose residential or any future development in that area, so I'm against the recommendation.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Then my further speakers, if you would like to close the debate councillor, okay?
Um, no, I think spoken enough.
Okay, we'll go to the working, raise the paper. Against, motion is carried. Item B twenty-two point seven-two. Two parties and two delegations to the chief executive officer. Mr Pretap, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. This, uh, report, uh, deals with the, uh, section eleven of the Local Government Act twenty twenty. We can enable this council to delegate the CEO with the, uh, specific exemptions. Any power, duty or function of the council under this act or any other act and delegate the CEO the powers to delegate the power of the council to other, other than the powers of the delegation to another member of the council staff. The, uh, recommendation, uh, is that the council adopts the delegations as presented. Delegation of council powers and obligations are managed by, uh, made up delegations and authorization services. They have gone through the delegation, uh, Mr Mayor and the councils and they have recommended, uh, that, uh, the council adopts the, uh, delegations as presented.
Okay, Mr Mayor.
Any further questions, sir, Mr Mayor?
May I ask, so the question, item twelve B twenty-two point seven-two and seven-three? Together?
We have the end block.
For that.
Yeah. Um, we are dealing with S five instrument of delegation, item B twenty-two point seven-two. My, I'm a member for, here is councillor King, second to councillor Jeffrey. Would you speak to the motion councillor?
No, thank you, it's procedure.
Do you further speak to the call the motion? Against the motion?
No.
Okay, go to the paper, let it go there. Very, very nicely. Item B twenty-two point seven-three, S six instrument of delegation to members of the council staff. Mr Pretap, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. The, uh, this report, uh, is delegation from the CEO to the other members of the staff of this Swan Hill uh, rules city council. Again, uh, as the CEO is, uh, this gives the ability to, to, uh, delegate his powers delegated by the council to him, to the other, other staff. In order to comply with the various legislation requirements, council delegates a range of powers and accountabilities to the appropriately qualified and experienced members of the council, uh, council staff. These delegations are made in accordance with section eleven of the Local Government Act twenty twenty. Delegation may be made subject to limitations on the powers such as the need to from the council on, of the determination. The recommendation, uh, Mr Mayor and the councils is, uh, that the council adopt the delegation as presented. Any further questions, uh?
Thank you, any questions councillors? Yes councillor King?
Yeah, just a question, there's a lot in this, um, in various acts that, that are included in this, in this report or as, as an attachment to, to this report. One thing I'm not clear on and I'd like some clarity on is with respect to the Planning Environment Act. Um, I can't remember the exact S sixty-one or something like that it was. It, with respect to the granted or refusal of planning permits. Um, what's the, um, role, I guess, of council? So, so if an application is, is predominantly refused, if, if, if an application is for a planning permit is refused, does this, um, instrument of deleg, delegation, does that leave the ultimate decision with the delegated officer? Or is there an opportunity for an applicant, um, making a planning permit application to ask for the decision to be made by a full, uh, meeting of council?
Section, uh, the S, S sixty-one, one on page forty-seven. The second, uh, second block of the table.
Sorry, forty, it's not.
On page forty-seven. Which is? S sixty-one, S sixty-one.
Thank you.
One. We have, uh, added as per our discussion, uh, at the assembly where councillor Les suggested that, uh, the refusal will, uh, come to the, uh, council for the, uh, for the decision or for endorsement of the decision.
Which is under the conditions and limitations.
Yes. So, it's, uh, it reads, uh, the permit must not be inconsistent with a cultural heritage management plan under the Aboriginal Heritage Act two thousand and six. This notice of refusal would follow council resolution to refuse the application. And also then on, uh, on S sixty-five, one, need to give notice to the refusal to attempt to application and a consent rule resolved under S fifty-seven. The, uh, conditions and limitations, uh, column. This notice of refusal would follow council's resolution to refuse the application. So, it will come, any, uh, refusal under those, uh, sections would come to the council.
So, to just be clear, if a, if a planning permit application is refused by a delegated authority being a council officer, the applicant then has means to be able to, um, have the matter heard by a council meeting. Is that, is that correct? Because I want to be absolutely, I want to be absolutely one hundred percent clear on that.
Um, yes.
Uh, so, so that's, so I don't want any loopholes in here.
Before we send any refusal, uh, notice to the applicant, that notice will come that notice will come, the report will come to the council for the condition of the refusal. Am I correct, Harry?
Yes, yes, Bart.
Yes.
Um, so at the moment, the way these are read, except with the addition, we, we don't refuse any applications, only council does, of our planning permit. We have refused applications to amend a condition on a permit? Or an amended plan? Not very often, pretty rare. Um, that we use the delegation, which is not that delegation, it's the delegation that literally is the power to determine a permit application to either decide to grant a permit, decide to grant a permit with conditions or refuse a permit. We, we only exercise the right to, under delegation, to grant a permit or grant a permit with conditions, not to refuse.
Okay, sorry.
Only the refusal, you, you see all the refusals. You will also see all the applications where there's objections, even if it's the recommendations to grant a permit.
Yep. Um, does it start out?
Try to qualify that, make that clear in the conditions. Because as soon as you, if you want to change that delegation to no delegation, that means you see every application, which I'm sure you don't want to see with two hundred applications. Because you're hiring ten more planners.
We won't just allow them.
No, that's right. Um, I guess the question is, do you want to see every refusal of a change to a condition or a change to a plan? Which, as I said, doesn't happen very often, but you're really holding up. If we've got to wait for a council meeting, it does really hold applications.
Please, councillor.
Can I ask a question? You're saying about the process, when, um, someone comes to the council inquiring about putting in an application for a building permit, is it part of the communication policy that the officer who's dealing with it does explain to the person that, um, if it's, you know, against planning policies and it would be likely to be refused, that they have the ability to, that it will go to a council meeting for council to decide? So is that something people are informed about?
Yeah, exactly.
So, so they're not, don't get put off initially by not understanding the process?
So what we try and do with people is say, look, the application as you're proposing at the moment wouldn't meet the requirements of the scheme. So the first thing is, if you change it by, by moving the building or
Yeah.
making the building a bit bigger or a bit smaller or whatever the re- reason is,
Hmm.
we, we, we have an issue with it. And that solves most of the problems.
Hmm.
There's probably, it's less than, it'd be less than ten percent, five percent of applications where we say it's unlikely that your planning application will be supported, if that's what we say,
Hmm.
in terms of getting an approval. Um, and then the process would be that council will make the decision, not officers, either to refuse or approve.
Yeah.
And then we let them know what council meeting it's likely to, um, be ready to go to.
Right, that was exactly what I was wanting. So people are, are aware of the process.
Yeah. And sometimes it's easy for them to change something to have an issue quicker.
Yes.
Um, particularly if it's a minor thing that they're not worried about changing to comply.
Okay.
Do you have any further questions, councillors?
Sorry, sorry, sure, sure. Second, may I say, did we answer your question? I think you want to know, is that process hardwired into the delegation? Is that correct?
I think, yeah, that, uh, that's what I'm getting at.
Hmm.
Um, I guess what I had in my mind was that an applicant would have the right, reserves the right, to have their application considered for decision by council at an ordinary meeting of, of council, if, in the event of a refusal. Um, now, they may not exercise that right, but I believe an applicant should have that right. Um, so that, that's what I'm trying to work out, whether that is covered or whether we need to specifically include that somehow. I don't know whether it's S sixty-one, one, or whether it's one of the other delegations, but that's the context of what I'm trying to cover.
So Mr. Green's question was, would you want it on the, an, an application? Would you want, I think, for every amendment to an application or plan? Is that what you were asking about?
No, it's more about if, not every single one, because some people might accept the refusal, but if they want, that they have a right to ask, because, because council ultimately has, can make decisions.
Yes.
Um, for planning permits. So I'm just trying to make sure that an applicant has every avenue open to them before they necessarily have to go to VK. That's, that's the context of what I'm trying to capture. So I just want to be, well, you know, there's a lot, like I said initially, there's a lot of delegations that we're giving, that we're giving over here, and to fully understand every single one of them, um, is quite difficult.
Yep.
So I just want to be absolutely clear that, that, that there's avenues for people who are making planning applications, that if they're refused, they can say, hang on a minute, I would like this to be considered by council.
So as a matter of course, it could, under these rules, um, and this instrument of actually, it would come to council, under those rules, yeah. It's going to come to council.
So it's going to come to council. If, if, if that's the way, if that's, if that's how that reads, you know, in that terminology, then I'm, then that's, that's okay, then my question, my question is answered.
Planning applications.
Planning applications, yeah.
Yeah.
Just planning applications.
So this notice of refusal would follow council resolution to refuse application. So it's got to come to council. So we're hardwiring that current process, is that right?
Yeah.
We review this, I think it's every six months. So if you don't feel comfortable in six months' time, we can revisit it again.
Right. It's not, it's not.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Okay, my name is Blake.
Okay, I'm happy to.
So, councillor Jeffrey. Do you speak to the motion?
Um, no, tell me, do you have any questions?
I'm thinking it's been time. And against the motion? There will go, the paper. Carrie, unanimously. Item B twenty-two point seven four, in principle adoption of performance of financial statements. Mr. Pretap, please.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this report has been entered whereby, uh, council's finance minister, Mr. Ash Free, and I will write it as a disclaimer. Thank you, Mr. Ash.
Thank you. Um, it's a part of the Local Government Act. Council has to, um, adopt an annual, annual set of statements. Um, included in that is our financial statements and performance statement. Um, these are signed off by the Victorian Order General, and for the Order General to do that, we require in principle adoption by council prior to issuing theirs. Um, they're all opinions, basically. Um, so council officers have prepared the financial statements and the performance statement. Um, they've provided with copies of both. Um, so these have been currently ordered by our, um, bargainers, ordered contractor. Uh, so we've been in constant contact with them over the last month or so. Um, and as of Thursday, I think the accounts are pretty, um, in a pretty good position. Uh, we've made two minor edits to the accounts. Um, so at this point in time, where, once the in principle adoption has been received, um, it will go back to the Order General. We should have our statements issued, um, pretty, pretty quickly. So that will then roll into the preparation of the annual accounts, and I believe that will be adopted at the October council meeting. Um, yeah, to be adopted by council. So once we've got the in principle, um, adoption received by council and we get the statements from the Order General, that will be, our accounts will be signed by the nominated officers, which is Captain, uh, Moore and Mick Fee. Um, and then, yeah, our accounts should be signed off for the year. So, um, just, if you'd like me to briefly talk to the annual report. Um, we're reporting a twelve point seven million dollar surplus for the year. Uh, state includes all of our grants, um, and expenditure, and just general expenditure for the year. Um, we've obviously, the surplus, look, is a significant number. Uh, but we're obviously carrying over a lot of that, uh, grant funding and stuff for projects that are still ongoing. We also received seventy-five percent of our grants commissioned for this year into last year. So that's reported in our income statement, first of all, effectively. Now, if you look at it as income, as matching income, it's effectively income that belongs into this financial year. So, um, that's, sees that number as significant, um, it looks significant on our survey account, I suppose. Um, so in addition to that, I suppose we look at the, uh, grants that we've got for the year, so that comparing it to the prior year. The prior year, we got significant funding for, uh, the Working for Victoria Programme. Uh, there's a couple of economic development stimulus programmes that were undertaken. Obviously, they were one-off receipts from the feds, so, uh, they won't recurring again this year. Um, as far as expenses concerned, we've probably got a bit of an increase in the materials and contractors on, on there. Um, we expensed two point five million dollars worth of capital works, uh, which is just general projects that, you know, don't meet our capitalization thresholds and get expensed. Um, and we have a little bit of revision in our waste provision, which I'll just touch on when we, uh, talk about the balance sheet. And then you also see on the income statement, we've had a significant, uh, asset revaluation movement. Uh, that's the reval of our assets, the increase in the unit rates, um, that gets booked through our accounts. So we've got some significant unit rates that increased and the conditions of our assets were revalued. Um, and the Order Committee has signed off on those, so those should be, that, that everyone's happy with them. Um, with regards to the balance sheet, uh, we've still having some significant cashing investments, so it's fifty-one million. Again, that's for our, just our projects that are ongoing, um, the grants in advance, things like that. They're sitting there waiting for these projects to be spent. Uh, so we're expecting that to, to drop this year quite significantly. Uh, and as, just as I mentioned before, the increase in the provisions, we've had, sorry, our waste management provisions have increased from six point nine to eight point three million dollars. And this is just because we've had a bit of an update on our landfill requirements. So what's required in our landfill remediation works, uh, closing works when the, um, if, when and if the site will be closed sort of thing. So it's been ordered by, um, maybe licensed, um, contractors to provide us with current unit rates, current requirements. So we're, us and the Order, are very comfortable with this, this information. It's totally up to date, um, so that's required, booked through our accounts. Uh, I suppose the other, other thing, other good thing to note in there is our loans, our current loans balance. So we paid out four point seven nine five million for an interest-only loan in November, just gone. Um, so that's now off our balance. Um, and then if, when we're continuing on our current loans, uh, forecast, we will be paid out within eight years' time and be debt-free. So, um, at this point, I'm looking to get an in principle adoption of this grassed-in accounts. We will then notify our order contractors, who will then, um, notify the Order General, and then we should have our accounts signed off and the formal statement, financial statement is completed for the twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Thank you, Mr. Pretap. Any questions, councillors? Yes, councillor King.
Yeah, um, thanks. That's comprehensive and difficult to undertake and understand all of it. Um, was there any projects or dollars for projects that were, like, significant that were carried forward from, uh, FY twenty-one, twenty-two into the current financial year? And did we lose or hand back any project funds that we received due to delays or projects not going ahead or, or anything like that?
Uh, well, we get the second one. We definitely haven't sent any money back.
Yeah.
I don't, it'd be very, very rarely would, there'd be variations done, and we'd be making sure that those funds were, were elsewhere. Um, but no, we definitely haven't sent any back. Um, with regards to carry forward jobs, we've got, um, there'd be a few there. Um, the White Stroud Job would be a, a big one.
Yeah.
Um.
I think that's a couple, actually.
Um, the Butterworth Street, there was money put aside to Butterworth Street. Um, it was about a million dollars, uh, was carried over as well. Uh, there's still ongoing, there was ongoing works, the Tower Hill and the aerodrome, which basically finished start of July, or end of early July. So that first sort of fortnight of July, we actually had some significant outgoings for those big projects there. Uh.
That's all.
Yeah, I can't think of any other big ones of stuff there.
No, all good, thank you.
Do you have any further questions, councillors? I don't know, my name is Blake, sir.
Oh.
I'm councillor Jeffrey.
Yeah.
Does he, yeah, thank you. Do you speak to the motion?
So, yeah, so, so thank you to all our council staff. I think it puts together a pretty comprehensive report in terms of the six million dollar budget that they're working with. Uh, it's good to say they continue the, 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 so we're probably going to get a very good one from the Order. Okay.
Do you have any further questions, councillors?
No, just saying congratulations to the city council for all the staff that's done to, um, putting together their things. Um, congratulations on the little work, Ash. And, um, I think we've probably seen a good, very good operation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have a further question? Any further questions? The name, the place, councillor Jeffrey, if you would go to the paper. I stand unanimously. Item B twenty-two point seven five, audit and risk committee, eight minutes together, twenty-two. Mr. Pretap, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillors. Uh, the audit committee meeting, uh, held on eighth of, uh, twenty-two. The audit committee met, uh, and discussed, uh, the usual, uh, items, uh, agenda. Items included, risk management report, internal audit updates and accommodation, our place update, twenty-one, and two, uh, S of the factory wells, uh, S, annual financial report, performance statement, vague or closing report, vague or final management letter, independent members', uh, self-assessment, significant legislative changes, uh, affecting council and suspected, uh, and actual fraud, that breaches of law by the many minutes of the meeting is attached as a part of confidential report, uh, Mr. Mayor and councillors. Uh, the recommendation that, uh, the, uh, council, uh, note the items discussed as at the date of, uh, twenty-two meeting of the audit and risk. Councillors, may note that it was the last meeting for Mr. Warrenthal, who was the chair of the meeting, is then answered on, uh, by the members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Have you had any questions?
Any further questions, councillors? Any more questions? My name is Blake. You can, you can, you can, you can, which is the motion, councillor Case, right? I'm going to say the call. Yes, I'm going to say now. We've got a trial for vice president. Motion carried, unanimously. Item B twenty-two point seven six, asset naming. Just go, please.
Thank you, Mr. King. Um, so the, it's council will remember, um, like last year, council passed a resolution for us to go to public consultation to see, um, names to be added to the asset naming master list. And you probably do remember that in the past, council used to have an asset naming committee, which hadn't met for many years, and council adopted an asset naming policy in lieu of the, um, asset committee. So under that policy, um, we went out and advertised in May. So from May to August, um, open for community consultation through Let's Talk for any, uh, submissions from our communities, um, for new names to be added to the asset master list. So we received twenty-three submissions, and fourteen of them were deemed compliant. Uh, some were non-compliant because there were applications, so the people were still alive, um, or there wasn't enough information, or they weren't, um, using local indigenous languages. So you've seen, uh, the submissions in prior reports. This, um, this report really seeks, um, for council to select a name out of the now amended asset master list by, um, the main east-west material route through the Southview subdivision, and also to approve the compliant names that are, uh, in that draft asset naming master list in principle. And then we will take them out to public consultation and exhibition. Um, as you probably Um as you probably remember from the policy, it is, one of the requirements is for those names, not people uh or to be transferred to the community, so we will put them out for community feedback and to make sure that our master list is appropriate for serving our community needs. Uh now, just in case you wonder, once this process is finished now, what we're doing is we're keeping the form on our website open indefinitely. So people will be able to submit suggestions to the asset master list they want to have. Uh once a year, we'll bring them to council, should there be submissions, uh with the rationale which ones are compliant, which ones are not, and which ones we recommend to be added to the master list. Um, ready to answer questions?
Thank you. Questions, yes?
Um. Um uh you, where it's written about the names of the people, you can see that sometimes it's not their family who's nominated them, it's some outside person. Um including myself, I nominated someone, um but um have, as part of the consultation, should we nominate one of these names for that particular road? Would their family be contacted maybe prior to it becoming public knowledge, someone, their family, to let them know that this has been proposed?
Absolutely. It's probably our, our procedure, how we deal with this, going to.
It could be a surprise if you were the nominee, but nice surprise, but.
Sometimes it's not, so we certainly want to be respectful for the wishes of our families.
Probably a question that I oversaw my mark, because I did provide feedback on people that are still alive, we got Claire, once she passed, and he's still alive and kicking, so they're removed. And I provided those to her, and I believe that was, that was on my name, so.
Well done, councillor Jeffrey.
What's the process to, to just put those on option and make a connection, or would that be done?
No, that, that can be done, hold management.
No, that's it. So if you want to file. File. So the two or three hundred dollars. Okay.
Okay, string it within the line. Any further questions, councillors? I've had, so we have a move of the name, that road, and the addition of those names to the master list.
Um I, I would like to make, move the motion that we select Laura Kirby from the, the compliant list uh as a proposed person for the name, and also approve the compliant names listed in the draft asset management as recommended.
Second up, is that the answer?
I'll sit in that.
You'll sit in that, you'll sit there. Would you speak to the motion, councillor Dan?
Um yes, thank you. Um. I would like to, um Laura Kirby was recommended to us on various um elements of her um long life. Uh she was nineteen ninety-one Indigenous and Professional Woman of the Year for Community Education and for many years of service within our community. Um having grown up under difficult circumstances, um went on to make a very strong contribution to uh the local Aboriginal community and the wider community in general. Um I would like to definitely acknowledge that the other people who have been nominated are very, very worthy and that we have, will in the future have many more roads to name and other assets. So it's certainly not um to, in any way to um elevate or to particularly favour any person. Um however, it is, uh it was discussed in our assembly as being a worthy recipient and um in line with our process to acknowledge more women and more Indigenous people in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dan. Go, councillor Young.
Um yes, I'd agree with Laura Kirby being nominated. She actually used to live across the road from my parents in Duran Street. She was a wonderful lady. She worked so hard for both the Aboriginal and the white community, and she's very deserving of getting that on.
Thank you. Further speakers for the motion.
Can I ask a question at this point? Um. How do we decide now whether it's, uh like this, assuming this is past, how do we decide whether it's a drive or a street or a way or a boulevard or something, something, is that, does that, do we consider then what goes with the name? So for example, I don't know, Laura Kirby Drive might sound better than Laura Kirby Street, just as an, as an example. At what point do we, do we make that decision? Or do you, do you guys make that, that decision off? I've never made a road, so you know, I don't know.
Well, you have to be consistent with whatever else is in the vicinity and the subdivision. It can't be something that stands out, but it has to be something that is easily identifiable as a different kind of road. Um so it depends, sometimes it's the width of the road that will determine it, but I think in this case you're at the last of discretion to decide whether it's um an avenue, it's a road, the boulevard.
Cool, thank you. That's, that's one, thank you. Sorry to hear about that, but just, just curious as to what, how the next part is.
Yeah, well, so we need to put that in there now, like, to put it. Yeah.
It's up to you, councillors. You call it done, I will.
Yeah, pressure on the guy.
Um let's see if I can rise to the occasion.
Avenue, boulevard, somewhere around there.
What are the suitable names?
Drive.
Drive. Way.
Yeah, way.
Oh, let me think. Boulevard sounds nice. Is that appropriate?
Uh we, we will still have to pull it through, um obviously to make sure that it's compliant, so we're still going to have to pull it through the government process to make sure that it gets approved.
Okay, so just, um do you want to amend your motion, councillor Dan, to Laura Kirby to Boulevard?
Yes.
Should we, so, sorry, before we get to that, should we make, I'm just making a suggestion that we select Laura Kirby as the nun and we select Boulevard as the preferred type of um road?
If approved.
If, if, if approved, just that way the, the Laura Kirby name is, is set in stone. Um but if the Boulevard needs to change to something else, avenue or something, it can.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I was going to ask if you had two or three order of preference in case you're not back on one, we go to the next, we go to the next, if that's, I'd go to council.
What are the other possibilities? Why?
Even just looking at the neighboring streets, um there's way and there's avenue and there's drive.
Oh, so they are.
Just leave it at Boulevard.
So they are, now you, you can select if you like, um avenue or way or drive is the second preference, if Boulevard is not second, not acceptable.
Hard enough picking a name, a lot of line on the top of the screen, so a little bit of that.
I'd say that might be, but anyway.
Does it, does a Boulevard have to trace the whole side and all any requirements to enter?
Probably be the criteria.
No. I suggest we pick a name on the top act, if, if we need to go down on picking Boulevard by this sort of.
Yes.
Road, lane, way.
Well, we can say.
I think we leave it like that with Boulevard as preferred.
Yes.
Um and then if it's not compliant, then we can make a decision after that.
Surely that's procedural or something, no? Administrative to decide that.
Well, you, sorry, do you want us to come back? If it's administrative, we won't, but if you want us to come back, we will.
I don't think it needs to go back to a meeting. I think I'm happy to go with recommendations if Boulevard's not okay.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
Get tidied up by the chair, I think.
Yes, we start your road, Tom, after the rest, that's it, many feedback, and approved, why wouldn't it? Yep, I think that's right, just to tidy that up a little bit. Okay, you're happy with that as meant, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um.
So it was moved by, yep, councillor Day, seconded by councillor Young.
Councillor Young has, has spoken. I am for the speakers for the motion. Yes, motion.
Oh, I'll speak for, sorry, I'd just like to also add that it's wonderful that our council is seeking to um improve the acknowledgement of both women and um also Aboriginal women and also, you know, to reflect the diversity of our community and our history. Thank you. So looking forward very much to the naming of future assets.
Thank you. That's a few closing questions.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Um and then I was right, the last part. Ask the members, please. Right, on to section C, decisions which need action or recommendations on the report. Mister Soyea.
Councillor's taking this red.
Any questions, councillors?
I've got a move.
Red, the move, say that, councillor King, uh who's the speaker, councillor councillor Jeffrey? Anybody else speak, just standing there, I wasn't bothered. Councillor's assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items.
Mister Soyea. Sure, Mr. Mayor, uh taken as read, are there any amendments or anything that is included in that report?
I've got a move.
I've got a move, thanks councillor Jeffrey, to our seconded councillor Young. Special motion, councillor Jeffrey.
Love conservative.
Okay, you've got your votes for White's Road, ask the members, please. Section D, notice of the motion, item D twenty-two point four, buffet service, let's get it covered.
Thank you. Um I would like to move that councillor Rife, Victorian Minister for Transport and Infrastructure, the Honourable Jacinda Allan and the Minister for Public Transport, the Honourable Ben Carroll, to emphasise the importance of the food and drink buffet service to Swan Hill and all long-distance trains. Um this, this Swan Hill to Melbourne, sorry.
Having, having received that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Now, who's the speaker, the motion, councillor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Community people have spoken to me, having heard about these um long-term plans in the media about their concerns of the possibility of Swan Hill losing its buffet service. Um this preceded the news item on ABC last week, and I do realise and acknowledge that this may be somewhat into the future. However, I do believe it's good for us to be on the front foot in defending the uh maintenance of services to our region. So the Swan Hill to Melbourne train service is highly valued. It is utilised by families, the elderly, those attending medical appointments, large numbers of people coming to the region for work in agriculture and of course, the general community. So it's the footy, for example. Additionally, for those travelling to or from Muljura, the bus leaves Muljura at four AM and meets the Swan Hill train at seven AM. The return journey doesn't arrive at Muljura until one forty AM. Without food available on the Swan Hill to Melbourne train, this would mean a journey of over seven hours ne- without necessarily sustenance available. The ongoing provision of a buffet service on long-distance train is currently under a cloud of uncertainty. The re- the regions already suffer from a lack of public transport. It is essential that our la- our current level of service is never undermined in either amenity, comfort or safety. Infrastructure improvements are essential to maintain the quality of life in regional areas and for our region to be able to attract essential trade people and professional workers into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, who's the other speaker for the motion? Okay, so motion, who's closing, please?
Um I said it all, thank you.
It's a rule, okay, we'll carry on, always fun. Ask you now, please. Uh section E, foreshadowed items, do we have any foreshadowed items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Section E, urgent items not included in the agenda.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Any? Uh section G, to consider an order of councillor reports, which I first today. Uh, thank you, councillor Young.
I was away for part of the um, the month, so I haven't got a lot to report, but I did go to the rededication ceremony for Martin's Centenary, the Animal More at Ultima, there were approximately a hundred and twenty-five per people attended from the different areas and regions. They'd come from all over the state um with historical connections to the area, so I was pretty amazed at the number of people that were there. Um Anne Widge was there and Peter Walsh, so it was good to see them there as well. Um it was an amazing lunch provided, and thanks to the Swan Hill Royal City for contributing to the catering. Also attended the Pacific Island event at Ken Harrison Park, there was over a hundred people there, with representatives from jobs in the touring Pacific Island support groups in Melbourne. There was a great display of their cultural singing and dancing, which was thoroughly enjoyable. So that was it.
Thank you, councillor Young. Councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Jeffrey, councillor King.
Uh as per the screen, use the online form this month, pretty proud of. Um along with uh the acting mayor, attended the Murray Mallie Land Science and Engineering Challenge. Uh oversaw the bridge construction activity. I'm pleased to say that if we do eventually ever get funding for a new Swan Hill Bridge, that there's a number of students out there who by the time we actually get that funding might be qualified engineers, but can very confidently um design a bridge, so great day. I think it's great that, um as councillors, that we get involved in, in such activities, because it shows um the younger members of the community that, you know, we're not just a bunch of, I don't know, stuck-up, tie-wearing, well, councillor Jeffrey doesn't wear a tie, but anyway. Um and, and you know, that we, that we like to get involved in, in stuff like that. Um and also pleasing as part of our role with the motorplex um complex out, out on Sea Lake Road, that the Swan Hill Drag Club is embracing the opportunity to um undertake business planning for their organisation and to really consider their, their future and, and what's next for them. And it's pretty, pretty exciting, some of the stuff that they're putting together, so uh it's a step in the right direction and something that we'll undertake with the other clubs up there as well.
Yeah, councillor King, councillor Young.
Um fifth of, no, fifth of September, the Nide District Action Group meeting, the second, the River People's Forum, sometime around that, Corraling Connecting River Country Consultation over the river. Um eighth of September, the Audit Committee meeting, nineteenth of September, the Swan and Incorporated meeting, and on the second of September, the Swan Hill Preating Touring Awards. And I'm not sure if the Lake Bogger opening of their new interpretive video, things at the Catalina Museum was this month, was it, Bill? You were there too?
Yeah, I was there too.
Anyway, what if the market went in? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor King. Uh as usual, quite a number of things. Uh the highlights were uh through the, through the month, were the uh desert meeting with the Victorian Liberal Government's Grants Commission, um which uh will be on three occasions during that meeting, the emphasis on growth and your ability to get grants are connected most uh. Um, um absolutely, so, you know, getting our town to grow gives us more money, that's what's that. Uh that was just so, so obviously one of the grand keys around this for getting, getting uh grants. Uh the science and engineering challenge, yeah, I love the science and engineering challenge because it's a lot of these young kids scratch a seam, the light go on, you know, that all of a sudden they can do something, they can build something, they can achieve something, and it's just fantastic. And I actually had, I've been on tour line for three years, and this year, we got the second highest score in the record although in all these science and engineering challenges all over the state over many years, so it's, these pair of young favourites are thrilling, actually. Uh and, and the O S uh did a fantastic job. Um uh I also went, attended a Sikh community ceremony, uh so we have a large number of um a large Sikh community here in Swan Hill, that was a real, a revelation. Um of course, the MRGC trip to Canberra advocacy, and I'll just really add a, a very summary of what, a brief report on what we did there. So we, um so last week I joined our CEO Scott Barber and members of the Murray River Group of Councillors at the Australian Parliament House in Canberra. It was a valuable trip that included extensive advocacy work on behalf of our region. We met with a number of ministers, advisers and members of parliament to, to forward on the advocacy work of the Murray River Group of Councillors and our municipality. We met with the Minister for Infrastructure and Transport and Regional Development, the Honourable Catherine King, to discuss the new Swan Hill Bridge and ongoing heritage slides. We also met with the Honourable Tanya Pliversack, Minister for the Environment and Water, listening to our concerns about the vulnerable state of our region and considerable community impact, cumulative impacts by that through our community. Uh we also discussed the delivery of environmental water stock. Yeah, but we did discuss the uh delivery of environmental water and with the water that we've already got, that has already been brought back. We expressed concern about the agricultural workforce crisis uh across both skilled and unskilled sectors when we met with Chief of Staff to answer uh to Honourable. and unskilled sectors, when we met with Chief of Staff to honourable Andrew Jobs, Minister for Environment. Our Regional Digital Connectivity Advisor to the Honourable Michelle Rowland, Minister for Communication, met with us to discuss regional digital connectivity, wireless broadband, MBE and on-farm connectivity. Murray River Group of Councils has a huge capacity for large-scale solar power generation, and we took the opportunity to meet with electricity and gas advisers to the Honourable Chris Ball, Minister for Climate Change and Energy, and for the group expressed their support of VNI West and large-scale solar projects. We'll continue these conversations with updates, as well as extending invitations to these ministers to visit our municipality, while achieving positive outcomes for our region. And, um, not least, uh, no, it's the season of workers' welcome, which was, that the Councilor Young attended, and I was an absolute eye to, um, to the number of people, I actually counted them, there was actually nearly a hundred doing performances, and there's almost another hundred around the outside, there was a huge number of people there, and just another section of our community, in our very diverse community there. Uh, and the rededication ceremony, Martin's Centenary, the Ultimate War Memorial, I found a very moving ceremony there with the, with the young, uh, young horse, horse people, in full war regalia, who brought it, introduced the, the start of the ceremony, it was just absolutely fantastic. So that's it for me. Section H, in Canberra items. I hope someone moved that we may have moved to in Canberra and discuss some, uh...
Oh, maybe that we've moved in to Canberra.
Thank you, Speaker Knight. Councilor Jeffrey, always invited. Uh, Councilor's your main session, so I'll confirm that we are connected.
Okay, councillors, so that concludes today's meeting on council. I think the meeting closed at four for the meeting started inside and we'll see if there is transition.